Greetings Hillsborough County. My name is CJ Roberts and I'm the President and CEO of the Tampa Bay History Center and the Chair of the Hillsborough Arts Council. This year, Hillsborough County is participating in a nationwide arts and economic prosperity study to gather information about local nonprofit arts and cultural organizations. Now if you're as passionate about the arts as I am, then you already know that a vibrant arts community helps local businesses thrive, invests in our county's economic well-being, and enhances overall quality of life. In order to show the impact the arts have on our community, we need your help. So if you're out and about at an arts event or a museum, you might be selected to take a quick, completely anonymous survey as part of this important study. Please consider participating in this survey as it will help support the Hillsborough County arts community. The comprehensive data needed for this study is not possible without your help. So please take the survey and let's make art count.
The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners meeting regarding land development code text amendments. It's Thursday, October 20th. It's 6:05. Welcome to the meeting. Your participation in the county government is appreciated and this is first of two required public hearings to consider text amendments to the land development code. A vote will only be required at the second public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak at the public hearing will be able to do so by completing the online comment sign-up form found at hillsboroughcounty.org/speakup. And you'll be required to provide your name and telephone number on the online form. This information is requested to facilitate online audio conferencing process. I'll call on you by your name in an order which has been completed and the prioritization is on a first come, first served basis. If you're attending, I would call on you as well, but seeing as I have no one in the audience unless someone walks in at the last second, I think we're good as far as that's concerned. And anyone wishing to speak can speak for three minutes. With that, I'll call the meeting to order and we'll do a roll call, please.
Chair Overman?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Hagan? Kemp?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
White? Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we have a quorum.
Madam Chair, if you have a quorum.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I'm not seeing changes to the agenda, but are there any?
Commissioner, the only changes to the agenda were some materials that were distributed to update the percentages of affordable housing to be, to match the vote that the board took last Thursday. And that had the 60 and 100 percent breakdowns. And so that has been updated in the agenda. Otherwise, the materials are, for consideration tonight, are those that are published.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the changes?
So the material that was just distributed, well, not just, but after, since our workshop about the LDC 221115 has, you know, a lot of cross-outs and underlines. The part in, on page four, density bonus 2A, like it has some parts underlined and crossed out. Does that mean it was done, those changes were done since the workshop? Or... Oh, this is our second public hearing. So since...
This is our first public hearing. We've had the workshop. And so I believe that that strikeout and underline is, rather than being changes, that was a, it's kind of a construction in the way that the text was put together and that it was added with underline and then struck. I don't believe that those changes are changes since the workshop.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Did you move the changes?
Do we have to move the change? No.
You'll, if you accept those as part of the materials, that would be the subject of the public hearing.
Okay.
And just for, there will be another public hearing and it is, it is procedurally appropriate to have changes between the two public hearings.
Sure.
But we wanted to get this material to you for tonight just to reflect the action that was recently taken.
Okay. So there was, there were just some documents that were sent this afternoon that are, were on our previous agenda. So that's why I was asking just the changes to the agenda.
Yeah.
Not changes to the actual code yet. Okay. So do I have a motion for the changes? No?
I don't think we have any.
Okay. All right. Then we'll just strike that whole conversation and move on to staff introduction of the amendments.
Mr. Israel Monsanto will run through a PowerPoint on these amendments. They are, with the exception of the changes just described, the same as what you saw in your workshop with one minor, I'd say improvement to the rezoning process that I'll, that I'll highlight to you. And that was, it was a helpful comment that was made by one of our stakeholders and I'll highlight that when, once Mr. Monsanto is done presenting the amendment.
Good evening, Commissioners. Israel Monsanto Development Services. This is the first public hearing for the land development code text amendments. The next public hearing and the adoption here and the second one will be on December 15th at 6:00 PM. Today we have the three items being discussed, LDC 221113, rezoning and land use meeting procedures, 221115, affordable housing development standards, and 221406, gofer tortoise habitat. LDC 221113, rezoning and land use meeting procedures. The purpose of the rezon, the purpose of this LDC amendment is to modify the rezoning and land use meeting procedures, including providing for a more expansive record for board consideration and for revised duties and responsibilities of land use hearing officers. Maintain the zoning hearing master process with established criteria for consent agenda items and provide that the board would hear applications not meeting the criteria for consent agenda. Text amendment will also provide for an open period between the zoning hearing master hearing and the board consideration by which the record may be supplemented through the submission of additional reading and also documentary materials. There are also other changes included in these text amendments such as the role and qualification of the hearing officer and the timing of open record period. And that concludes the summary of these items.
Board members, I'll just highlight the change I referenced. It's on page two of four in the backup and it should be shown in, in the purple text. So the red was the original edits, the blue is the second and it's purple and it is D2 and it deals with submitting documentary, sorry, documentary evidence after the hearing closes. And we made the change, rather than submitting to the administrator, we use the text master file and we use that, that text elsewhere already in the code and we think it provides much more specificity and so, so we've made that change. So rather than sending it to the administrator, which, which could mean a lot of different things, a lot of different people, we wanted to be specific with this to help, to help everybody understand what was needed.
Okay. Any comments? Seeing none?
We don't make a motion today?
No, we're just hearing.
Okay.
Oh, your mic's not on, but, but, no, we're just hearing these items today. Okay, great. Thank you very much. Mr. Monsanto?
All right. Thank you. Next item, 221115, affordable housing development update. The purpose of this amendment is to revise and also add development standards to implement the affordable housing density bonus policies proposed for the updated housing section by the comprehensive plan text amendments, HCCPA 2208. The amendments include requirements of the bonus usage, including affordability term, density setbacks, and income requirements. The usage of these regulations is, if adopted, only applies to those properties within the urban service area boundaries. The land development code section 61107 provides for the standards to implement the affordable housing density bonus and this text amendment will update those, the code to reflect changes to the comprehensive plan. And that concludes this summary.
Seeing no questions? Oh, Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. And yeah, that passage that I was asking about, it's on page four of the new additional packet that we got for this and it is in the density bonus, C, density bonus, section 2A. So it says, "The project shall have access to a public street." Good. And somewhere along the line, it was crossed out and where public water and sewer service are available at the site. So we would no longer be requiring public water and sewer service, but... Why was that?
The density bonuses are available only in the urban, in the...
Urban service.
Urban service area. So as a requirement, as a development requirement, they'll be required to provide utilities, whether or not they are there in front of the site, it will still be a development requirement. So the, so, there was a question that was asked, was the intent here to disqualify sites that didn't have utility lines right available at the site? And, and the answer was no, that was not the intent. So that text was struck to not have a limiting factor that water and sewer are available. There's, it doesn't change the concurrency requirement that they be on public water and sewer in the urban service area, but it, it was struck because it could have been perceived as a, sorry, as a limiting factor when, when within the urban service area, you know, a development that doesn't have utilities right adjacent that are required to hook up. They need to extend those utilities to the site.
But so what if, so that's what I thought, because the next, you know, the next piece says it's got to be wholly located within the urban service area. So, so I was thinking that, but then I was thinking, well, now we have areas in the university area or the Palm River area that are inside our urban service area that have not, that do not have access to public drinking water. Places in the university area that were, they've been trying to put some affordable housing in the, or people are living in housing already, that sand is coming out of their faucets because they're on wells, even though they're in the urban service area. And Palm River also has had very, issues with very bad water quality. So if we're incentivizing affordable housing for very vulnerable people who don't have the resources to check and monitor their water or even to complain about it or to move elsewhere, I just want to be sure that we're not incentivizing and giving people a density bonus to build more affordable housing somewhere that the people aren't going to have access to municipal drinking water. So, I mean, I, I think we should insist that these projects where we're incentivizing extra density for affordable housing, that they are actually able to be hooked up to municipal water and sewer services.
We can make that, that text clarification here. I'd say that just operationally, the, the density bonus applies to new development.
Right.
That new development comes in to develop, whether in the Tampa service area, if they're in unincorporated Hillsborough County, in the urban service area and a new development, they're going to be required to hook up to, to public water and wastewater.
So that's elsewhere and we don't have to do that here. There won't be any incentivized affordable housing density bonuses for people in these no man's lands between the Tampa service area and the county's service area in our urban.
That's correct. That's correct. But we could, just to address this point, add some language that the project shall be served by public water and wastewater. The requirement is there, whether we put that text in there or not, but if, you know, that, that would squarely address that question and...
I like it.
Okay.
Yeah, just to make sure, since people are asking about that as well. And then just a second point, while we're right there, under 2, where, 2B, it says, that's not a bomb scare or anything. So it says, "The project shall be wholly located within the urban service area." And I'm just going to put this out here. Should we add, where we're, now we're talking about where we're going to incentivize additional density for affordable housing. It's got to be in the urban service area naturally. Should we add that it should not be in the coastal high hazard area in order to get a density bonus or at least not an administratively approved density bonus? Because that's what we're talking about here, is an administratively granted density bonus in the coastal, if, you know, that could occur unless we say it can't occur, in the coastal high hazard area in an evacuation zone. And that, you know, that wouldn't preclude somebody theoretically coming to the board to ask for it, but maybe just making sure it couldn't just happen administratively in the coastal high hazard area, get a density bonus because, I mean, A, I don't think we would need to, want to be put, our comp plan, our comprehensive plan says we don't want to be increasing density in the coastal high hazard area at all. But certainly for affordable housing, when you've got people who are struggling to afford a home, there, you put them in the evacuation zone A, they're going to have challenges evacuating. They're going to have to evacuate every storm and they're going to have challenges. They're more likely to require public shelter space and, you know, that's an added burden for them, a burden on the county and we're giving density bonuses away. So administratively, they will also be the hardest hit if their home is damaged while they're evacuated to public shelter space and then they have no place to come back to. I mean, it's not, it's likely to be owned by the landlord, but still, they're out of a home. And finally, as I was thinking about this, the, you know, the insurance is more expensive in the coastal high hazard area for flooding, for wind damage, for the vulnerability. And so it would be more expensive for the property owner to provide and that gets passed on to, in your rent. So, I mean, I just think it doesn't make sense to be handing out administrative density bonuses in the coastal high hazard area. What do you think?
So Commissioner, at this point, the, the way that the amendment is structured, the density bonuses, the actual density bonus, still need to be approved by the board.
Okay.
Either through rezoning initially or through a minor modification process if it's an existing PD regardless of, so regardless of what the otherwise process would be for affordable housing, it can be a minor modification. So at this time, what, what is available administratively is, is the reduced lot size for standard zoning districts.
I see. I see. Well, administratively or not, I'm going to make a motion that we amend that section to, at 2B on page four of this where it's talking about where we're putting affordable housing and say the project shall be wholly located within the urban service area and the project shall not be in the coastal high hazard area.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'll, I'll just say that I totally agree with everything that was said. I was ready to second it as well.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Not seeing any other further comment. Please indicate your vote.
Chair?
Please do a roll call.
Chair Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried five to zero.
Okay. Just for clarification, State, because I'm still trying to reconcile the decisions that were recommended last meeting. And the very beginning of our, our land development code text amendment staff report, it describes the summary of changes as being, you know, that 61107 provided for a standard. The text amendment will increase the median income used in determining and establishing affordable housing through the application of the affordable housing density bonus from 80 to 120. It's my understanding that the vote that we did last time would be from 80 to 100 percent AMI, providing that the required set-asides at the 60 percent and 80 percent AMI. I see the changes that I've received reference the 100, 100 percent, but I'm not finding and, you know, just, I'm not locating it somewhere in the document or what page, but I'm not finding the required set-asides at the 60 to 80 percent. Am I just missing it somewhere in this document that I can't find?
So Commissioner, I think it's the way we present it. The first page is the definitional, it sets the, the, what the proposed definition for code purposes of affordable housing is and that has the 100 percent cap. The, the density, the split between the 60 and 100 is further in the document and if it's, if you're looking in the PDF, it's page five of 13 and that is section C.
Of 61107?
Yes.
Okay.
C, I'm sorry, getting the numbers. C2D on page five of 13 and you see it previously had the 30 percent at 60, the 20 percent at 80 and the rest at, up to 120 and that has been edited consistent with the...
To be 100 percent AMI instead of 120.
Fifty percent at the 60 and, and the remaining units at 100 or below.
So that's actually C3 item where it just is changing that one item. I'm actually looking at a printout of it, but it says, it's C3, remaining affordable units will be set aside for incomes at 100, 100 percent is, would be the change, or below the median income adjusted for household size. So the, the sections one and two will remain, correct?
One, one is being changed so that it is a minimum instead of... One is being changed so that it is a minimum, instead of 30% be set aside at 60, it reads 50% will be set aside for incomes at 60 or below. Section two is struck, and the new two is the old three, and it has, the remaining affordable units will be set aside for incomes at 100% or below the AMI. So that's--
I get it. Okay, okay, that's fine. I understand. That's what I was trying to reconcile. The changes I had did not help me see that, and that's what I was trying, I was like, wait, I'm not seeing that. So thank you very much for pointing that out. You know, it's very important for us to recognize that when we lower it to, from 120 to 100%, we take the risk of not building the 50% of affordable units, or the number of units at 50% at 60% or below. And that's my concern, is not having that room so that the affordability factor for building the units doesn't pencil out, and so we don't get the units built. And I realize it's really important that we provide for, you know, lower income and have as many units as we can, but if we don't build any units, it kind of defeats the purpose. So I would like to, you know, basically hold true to the idea that if we're not able to get anybody to work with these kinds of deals or these kinds of parameters, that within six months, we look at what the challenges are, work with the industry. Interest rates do make it even more difficult to see if it's possible that we would readdress the issue on the top side, not necessarily the bottom side. Leave the allocations good, but be able to at least go to 120 to see if that assists in getting more of the units built at the density increases that we're looking at that would allow for the units to actually get built in the first place. And that's my only concern. Thank you for helping me find that. I was like, I know it's in here somewhere, I just could not find the document. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Commissioner Cohen?
Well, I just wanted to address what you just said. I thought it was part of the discussion last week, but if it wasn't, maybe we should reiterate it again here tonight. I think, I think we all said that we were going to be very open to changes, and that we would watch it very closely, and if it looks as though the standards are not working, we'll change them, and we'll make it work, because clearly, we don't want to have a program that people can't take advantage of. But we'll try this and see if it has the desired effect.
And the reason I bring it up is that, once we say we need to do something, it takes another six months to nine months to get it changed. So it means the decision we're making this evening will take a year to sort of unfold and resolve, and that's my only, my only concern. I, well, if that's possible, and I'm looking forward to seeing if that's possible, to expedite it. That wasn't on the mic, so I wanted to make sure it was heard. If there's any way to expedite that process, if we come to that decision or that opportunity, I'd be willing to see if that's even doable. So, thank you very much. Next?
We do have one person signed up for the public hearing.
I would also like to add to that discussion for a second.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I just saw your hand. Thank you for speaking up.
That's okay.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Right. I just want to add, lest we forget, that we've just been giving away density without any requirements, and as long as we continue to do that, and don't do this, it doesn't matter what we do, we're just giving away more. So I don't know how we cure that, just automatically giving away density with no requirements to it, and no expectations. So I just want to put that in as a formula, because it will never work, as long as that is what we do.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp, I wholly agree. Yeah, in order to get these levels of density, affordable housing needs to be part of the equation. So I appreciate those comments very much so, and would love to stay on that point. Okay, well, thank you very much. If there are no further comments regarding this amendment, we'll move on to the next--
I believe we do have one person signed up to speak at the public hearing?
On this particular item?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. I don't have a list, so who might that be?
We had Ron Weaver signed up to speak.
Okay, all right. If Mr. Weaver is available, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, thank you, members of the commission. This is a very timely discussion of taking care of the neediest folks first with respect to what you're doing tonight.
Mr. Weaver, communications--
And what you have--
Wait, 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 Mr. Weaver, I'm sorry, we're having great difficulty hearing you. If communications could help clear up the static, or if you could get a little closer to your device that's recording your voice, that would be helpful.
Is that better?
A little bit.
Is that better?
Try--
A little bit, okay. Let me speak up if I may. Is that, is that better, Madam Chairman?
Yes, that's better, that's much better, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, thank you, Madam Chairman. Ron Weaver, 401 East Jackson Street, and I would just like to speak to your commendable efforts to make sure that this program does indeed help the neediest first. And I was the first to stand up with the folks, 20 people in purple shirts, four years ago, to urge your $10 million at the time for affordable housing to be directed toward those with lower AMI, rather than a moderate AMI. So I appreciate very much and have spoken there at the county commission in favor of helping the neediest first. However, I respectfully submit to you tonight that we've begun to try to figure out which clients, and we have 155 lawyers, and about 10 of them do affordable housing, about 25 do land use in our law firm statewide, and we have been getting calls from people saying they don't know how to make it pencil at these new rules of 100% AMI instead of 120% AMI. And add to that, the 50% of the units have to be at 60% or less, rather than the previous last week before last, of only 30% of those being 60% AMI. Those are two penciling life and death differences, which mean that deals that are on the edge of seeking those density bonuses cannot, will not, and won't provide for the neediest first, they won't be providing for anyone along the lines unless we find some way to make these numbers work. And one of the ways to make them work is to take what your staff has studied for a year, and rather than waiting for the next six, or 12, or 18 months to find out that you can't make these deals work, you've been studying it for a year, and for a year, minus one week last week, it was indeed, all the consultants and all the staff and everyone else that talked to you came up with 100% AMI, because that's where deals begin to pencil. And if it's 30% of them are required to be 60% AMI, rather than the 50% at 60% AMI, then they work. Those two together mean that you can actually find a way to make a deal in Hillsborough County work under current extremely high land cost and extreme inflation cost of the materials for all of that construction that you've been hearing about for this last three years. Therefore, if deals are going to pencil, if anybody's going to make this work, rather than waiting 12 or 18 months to make these deals work, I think you should go back to the first 51 weeks of the last year, when your staff, your consultants, your stakeholders, your developers, your interest groups, and yourselves, until you saw that at 30% at 60% AMI, and another 20% at the old 80% AMI, and the rest at 120% AMI, you're able to finally get deals to work and to pencil them in. And we're already getting calls from folks saying, we can't make it work if you're looking at all these other factors of extreme land cost, extreme increase in supply cost and inflation, and then you're somehow supposed to, in order to get these densities from Hillsborough County, to work with numbers that respectfully do not work, to what you were doing at 30%, at 50% AMI, let's help the neediest first, 50--
Mr. Weaver?
And then another 20% at 80.
Mr. Weaver? Ron? Okay, your time is up. Thank you, we hear you, I hear you.
Thank you for your time, thank you for your listening.
Thank you so much for your comments, I appreciate it. Okay, are we, do we move on to the next item?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Mr. Monsanto?
Yes. The third and last item for tonight's agenda is LDC 221406, gopher tortoise habitat. The purpose is to require applicants for development of land that includes gopher tortoise habitat to provide a thorough survey prepared by a Florida prison wildlife commission authorized agent, and to report any previous violation of gopher tortoise regulations in the state of Florida. The text amendment will also provide for consideration of smaller lot size requirements for development that preserve on-site significant wildlife habitat, which is beyond the minimum required by the code. It would also increase penalties for unpermitted land alterations to significant wildlife habitat. This amendment is related to CPA 2215 of the comprehensive plan, and changes will also include modifications to Part 401 Natural Resources, 503, changes to PD, and also district performance and dimensional standards, and finally also to Part 1106, which is enforcement section. And that concludes the summary of this item.
Thank you very much, Chair. Are there any public comment on this item?
Nope, nobody has signed--
That was the only one? Okay, great. Any comment by the board?
Yay.
Yay? I'm a yay too? All right, this is great. Yeah, this is, all of this has been excellent work, I appreciate it. We love our tortoises. And they, you know, the only, while this is specifically for gopher tortoises, there's a lot of indigenous species that are benefited by this also, and I appreciate the work that's been done here, because it does definitely address the issue associated with wildlife habitat.
Yes.
And given that it does seem like the wind blows depending on whether or not a protected species is still protected or not, having at least the habitat protected in order to facilitate that protection is of great value. Thank you very much for this. Okay, are there any other items for this evening's agenda that we need to address?
Includes our agenda.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, and with that, we'll call the meeting adjourned.